There are organizations that do that. I think actually the Chicken Shack has part of, uh, part of that. All right, we will come back to order. And I guess we are ready now to move on to item number two then. Proprietary funds. We've lost our finance department. The pressure was just too much. That's progress. Um, and actually, uh, Madam City Clerk brought up a good point. Have we provided sufficient direction regarding what was discussed under item one? Or do we need something more formal?
I'm still finalizing, so yes.
Yes, what?
Um, possibly something a little more formal. But if you'll wait for me, just do two more slides before you do it.
Please go ahead.
Okay. So finishing up the governmental funds, and actually this includes the enterprise funds as well. Um, if all the positions today are approved, the FTE account will, sorry, move from 207.8 full-time employees to 208.8. So it'll just be, um, an increase of one. And so just to summarize, the governmental funds, all fund balances are currently positive with operation. Sorry, I made a run for it.
You can have a moment to catch your breath.
Lot of stairs in the building. Okay, so all fund balances are positive with oper- with required operational reserves. Um, there'll be a transfer from the general fund to the acquisitions improvement fund of $3.6 million. There's also transfers from the voter-approved capital improvement fund of $3,047. Forty seven, yeah, $3,047,000, sorry about that. And this includes a general fund transfer, which actually is going into acquisition improvements of $1 million. And then a utilities transfer of $2,047,000, which again is the land sales from track 349. And also, if you approve everything or agree with everything on the governmental fund changes, the staff will increase from 207.8 FTEs to 208.8, 208.8, 208.8 FTEs. Can I go over the calendar real quick? So this is our calendar year, our calendar, our budget calendar for fiscal year '23. As Diane mentioned earlier, beginning of January, Diane and myself met with all the directors to ask for their budget requests. Then towards the end of January, and actually on to the middle of February, we again met with the directors with the city manager. Here we are today on March 3rd for our first budget meeting. On the 16th of March, we'll have our citizen workshop. On the 7th of April, we'll have another budget meeting where we'll bring back all the CIP because there'll be some CIP changes. So it'll be operations and CIP in the next budget. Um, April 15th, I'll submit the tentative budget to the state. April 19th, we have a placeholder just in case we need to talk more about budget. The 16th, we'll publish the notice of the hearing. The regular council meeting on the 24th of May is when the final budget will be approved and as well as the CIP budget. And then June 1st, I'll submit the budget to the state.
All right. Um, since we are then talking or, or within this section included uh, the special projects and acquisitions, um, I do have a, a couple of projects that I think are worthwhile within that. Uh, the first may not actually incur any expense whatsoever. And that is to provide an area for the mounted police patrol to both house their animals and provide, uh, space for their equipment. There appears to be areas of city-owned land adjacent to the existing Horsemen's Association area. There may be some work that is needed as far as access to that area or preparing the area, but I've been informed that there's a nonprofit that supports the mounted patrol and they would be willing to erect whatever improvements are needed. But potentially up to $50,000 for access to it. And of course, identification of that parcel that would be adjacent to the existing Horsemen's Association area. Second item is to provide up to two areas for RV vehicle parking with space for a minimum of 100 vehicles. This would not be an area that would be constructed on the same level that, uh, private storage facilities are constructed for, but would be something that would have a chain link type fence, asphalt millings for the, uh, ground cover. And the idea behind this is we have a problem, a safety problem with recreational vehicles being parked on our city streets, especially the narrow city streets, uh, to give residents an opportunity to put those vehicles elsewhere, um, especially if it appears that, uh, there's going to be enforcement under this new civil penalty scheme that the state has legislated. And I would propose up to $250,000 for that project. And then thirdly, um, providing internet connections if they do not already exist to city-owned buildings that provide a sufficient level of internet access, whether that's upgrading network equipment or connections from Cox Communications or other providers, and provide up to $100,000 for those projects. Anyone else?
Yes.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have two projects that I'd like to add to Parks and Rec. However, I would like to know, I'm not sure what the cost is, even if it's a feasibility study, but I think they're both very important. One is security for our current community gardens. There has been a number of situations in which there's been vandalizing done in there. It's open to the public, which is wonderful, but it's also people's blood, sweat and tears and, and growing what they need to grow for themselves. That I, I think it's important beyond cameras to have some sort of fencing or gate only able to be accessed by those people with, with current, um, agreements to have those specific plots. And the other is, and I, I don't see it necessarily for right now, but the cost of taking some land in Boulder City to create at least one municipal dog park. If we need to figure out what that's going to cost, you know, we had this ongoing, very serious, very emotional discussion on leash laws and our dogs and people's safety, and yet we do not have a municipal dog park. Not to take away from the one that's currently the 501(c)(3), but I think if we're, we're eventually, if we do or don't ask people to have all their dogs on leashes, that they should have some grassy option in Boulder City. So I'd be very interested in providing the cost of either one of those, actually both of those. There have been complaints for years of vandalizing of the community gardens. And I know we had budget money for a second one, but I'm very concerned about the current one. I've, I've heard stories of turnover of people in the clubs, about people who don't want to do it, about people, um, about a school project that was vandalized. So, uh, those are two projects that I feel are very important for Parks and Rec, um, to look into an actual cost or location. I think the fencing around the gardens, um, is probably the lower cost of the two. But, um, cameras, I'm not sure what the story is with cameras, but you can see somebody or people walking around, but just have, access to the actual garden should only be for those who are gardening. So those are my two suggestions. I have not gotten information about exactly what they would cost, but I'd like to find out some general amounts and see where we could put that in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Um, aside from special projects, a question that I have is to identify the ratio of police officers and firefighters to our population and how that compares to other communities. Again, since we are evaluating the number of employees, I think this would be the appropriate time to determine what those numbers are and where we fit into, uh, how other communities operate. So I don't have any number, um, but I am asking that we determine that for whatever our next meeting may entail. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, and considering that not to be, uh, an adversarial perspective, but I'd also like, if we're going to consider that, to look at communities with 207 square miles or with land. You know, I mean, we could look at it for police and fire overpopulation, but we've also got, what do we, the 39th largest geographic area in the country. So both police and fire require to deal with all of those, every inch of that land. And so, um, I think it's an important number, but I think a number of variables need to be considered in that number.
Thank you. And yes, my proposal was for Boulder City as, as it is, which includes all of that. Right. Anyone else? Okay. Um, I guess then going back to your list that you had on the PowerPoint there, the full-time employee then, we're talking about two positions increasing from part-time to full-time. Are there any concerns with proceeding with a budget that takes that into account? So since we're not voting on things, no one has a concern about that.
You're allowed to vote if you would like to. It is a special meeting, but I'm fine with the direction that you guys are okay with leaving it in there.
The direction's sufficient for me.
Okay. And the slide's not up there, but?
The other one would be the ARPA funding. If you agree with proceeding with possibly using ARPA funding for the muni code, the assisting, the, at least the first year of getting the municipal court compliant with current regulations and also the initial software costs to, basically the implementation cost of the new software to assist permitting.
Uh, my only concern with that is, you know, as Councilmember Adams had brought up as well, uh, what's the tail on these things, whether it's the courts or the software packages? That we don't buy into something that we can't budget into future years? But again, I, I think some of this is appropriate for a one-time expense. And so I have no objection. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I, I would like to see, you know, down the line, what is the plan and how do we plan to make sure that that money is available so that we're not finding ourselves, uh, you know, in, in an unfortunate situation? So I would like to see that before, you know, nailing anything down, but I'm not opposed to it either. Thank you.
Yeah, we can put together an analysis for you. I think there are some savings that we will experience from not using other things. Um, and then the implementation cost is a big chunk of that. So, so we can put something together for you, but thank you.
Anything else on this portion?
I think those were all my questions on the governmental, so thank you.
All right. Councilmembers, any other issues? All right. If you want to proceed then, I think we're on to, uh, item number two here for proprietary funds.
Yep. So the difference between the governmental and the proprietary funds are the proprietary funds should be self-supporting and our city's proprietary funds or also enterprise funds are our utilities. So it's the four utilities and the admin, our airport and our cemetery. And the big difference really is they don't receive tax money. They receive charges for services. So again, the same goals for today's meetings for this topic is to present a clear picture to the residents, council and staff regarding the city's financial direction, present summaries of revenues and expenditures, including personnel costs, provide an overview of summary of all city funds and request, request direction on operations budget from the council. Again, this is an operation budget and maintenance meeting. So discussion of exact project or discussion of capital improvement projects other than their funding is not included in today's meeting. So to begin with our largest enterprise fund that we have, which is the utilities. So this year with the utilities combined, the revenues will be about $36 million with expenses of $41 million. If you look at the trending of expenses and revenues in utilities, the large fluctuations are due to capital improvement projects. So a year when there's a lot of capital improvement projects, expenses, expenses raise. And also the years when those projects happen, there's also, has typically been the voter-approved, um, funding coming in as the revenues and increasing the revenues as well. So the funding source.
And just, just to be certain, that funding stops, right, after this year?
Yes. The 500,000 stops, it was, the last year was 22. And there's like a few thousand dollars left of track 349. That's not currently in, in fiscal year '23 that's available, but that's the end of the funding as of right now. That's, has been approved by the voters.
Okay, thank you.
So the utility funding sources for fiscal year '23, as you can see, the majority of them are charges for services at 82%. The other financing is the voter-approved money, so the 2,047,000. And also that little tiny slice, that 2% is taxes, which is the infrastructure sales tax of a million dollars that goes into the water fund to assist with capital improvement and debt. So projected revenue assumptions for the utilities. When I submitted this PowerPoint last week, there is no significant changes in revenues as the rates are remaining the same for fiscal year '23. That same day, um, our finance director and utilities director went to a meeting at SNWA where they discussed their fees are raising actually in January and they're raising significantly in March. So although we're not talking about this in this meeting, we'll bring it back in April, what those changes are and possibly what the city can do with that.
And as I recall, I mean, this has been known. Uh, SNWA has these rate, uh, plans in place. And I believe there are rate increases for the water over the next five years from SNWA.
Yep, that one as well, but the one I'm talking about is actually the infrastructure fee. So the fee that most people see like $12 on their bill right now that goes straight to SNWA, SNWA is increasing that fee.
And that's a pass-through fee then?
It is.
And what I mean by that is, um, if SNWA raises that, it, it's not a decision of this city council, it just goes right onto their bill.
Yes, but we will discuss how we will handle that at the meeting in April. But yes, in theory, it's a pass-through and that's exactly what happens. It's not a decision by council. In the last resolution that was pointed out that that's a pass-through fee, it's not something the city takes in, it's something the city gives to SNWA for that household.
Thank you.
Yep. So expenditures in the utilities combined. So the largest expenditure is 36% is capital. The other large expense at 31% is the purchase of actual water and power. And then the next highest expense, if you combine salaries and benefits, is at about 15%. So now we're going on to the utility admin fund. So the, the expense, the budget for the utility admin fund is about $3.3 million. So the admin fund includes the utility director and all his supporting staff. Um, it also includes insurance for the utilities and the utility billings and collections. So looking at the expenses broken out for fiscal year '23 for the admin fund, salaries are 55%, which is 1.8 million. Of that 775,000 is the inner fund transfer going back to the general fund to assist with payroll and accounts payable, accounts receivable, IT, all the services that utility uses. The other large, um, portion of the admin fees is other purchase services, which is includes printing and insurance, which is about 22%. Also purchased property services of 7.5%. That is just our bank fees, which is about $250,000. So changes since fiscal year '22 in the admin fund. Utility billing is actually requesting a personnel shift. Coming up in March, they have a meter reader that's going to retire. And with automations and other things that have come into place last few years, really the utility billing needs more staff in office to assist with customers than out reading meters. So they're proposing creating a utility billing worker, which could read meters also and also come in and assist inside the office. With this change, so they would reduce that part-time, that full-time meter reader to a part-time meter reader or part-time utility billing worker. And also requesting one of their part-time office assistants become part-time personable. This change would be an FTE change of negative two and it would reduce the budget by about $40,000. This will come up in item number three and hopefully it will be approved by resolution. Also, a big change in the admin fund is the credit card fees. In fiscal year, the new budget is 250,000. Diane will address this later when we start talking about fees, but we budgeted 91,000 for fees for fiscal year '22. And at the end of December, we're already at 93,000. So they are increasing and we're looking at ways to reduce that.
Is there a reason those fees are increasing? I mean, my experience with credit card fees is they charge a, a flat percentage and that's it.
There are so many moving variables. No, there, it depends on what credit card you use. There's a lot of moving pieces to our credit card fees. And usage has gone up tremendously.
The majority of our customers are now using credit card if they're doing a one-time payment versus a bank account, which has no, no fee. Maybe, maybe it's convenience, maybe people aren't wanting to come in the office.
It's the reward points.
Yeah. So if you use your American Express, it's a higher percentage than Visa, um, so.
Thank you.
And that's part of our cost. And again, Diane will address that one with, on item number four slightly. So moving on to electric. So the budget for revenues for electric fund for fiscal year '23 is about $18 million. Of this 1.3 is the voter-approved, um, funding for capital improvements. The expenses are 18.6 million and of that 4.4 million is capital improvement costs. And again, the expenses that fluctuate year over year is really due to capital improvement projects. And the revenues for the electric fund, the majority, 92% are charged for services. And the other financing is just that 1.3 for the land sales for voter, for track 349. And electric fund expenses, the largest expense for the electric fund at almost 40% is purchasing power. This year, power significantly went up. We originally budgeted, um, $6 million in fiscal year '22 and this year it's expected to be 7.3 million. This was a lot higher than we had budgeted in the past. Also, it's $2 million higher than what was in the rate model, which has now been adjusted. And we're looking at ways to remify this, like possibly bringing the, the rate study sooner than later to readjust all the inflation that's happening. The other large cost for electric is capital at 30%. And of this 4.4 million is current projects and 1.1 is depreciation. And then salaries in the electric fund is about 11%. And the transfers out of 10% is what supports the admin fund. So the large changes in electric since fiscal year '22 is really the capital project costs are increasing due to inflation. And again, we'll address this in the meeting in April when we bring the CIP back. The projected cost of power increased significantly since '22, which is 1.4 million higher than what we budgeted last year and $2 million higher than what they expected in the rate study. And again, we're considering conducting a new rate study sooner to address this. Water for fiscal year '23, the revenues are $11 million and expenses are $18 million. And again, this high increase in expenses, or $15 million, I'm sorry, is due to capital improvements. The water fund revenue comes again mostly from charge for services at 90%. Taxes are about 9%, which is the million-dollar infrastructure fee or infrastructure tax. And then 100,000 came from voter-approved funding. The expenses for the water fund, again, the highest for water is capital at 48.3%, which is 7.2 million. Of this debt is 2.8 million. Capital improvement projects are 1.4 million. And amortization is 2.9 million. Also, the other purchase services at 34% is just purchasing the water, which is budgeted at 5 million for fiscal year '23, which is an increase of 400,000 from last year. And then again, salaries and benefits are about 8% of the water budget. So the large changes in the water fund from last year, again, are the capital improvement costs, inflation, they're just increasing. And then the projected cost of water is $4,000 higher than it was last year. And then, um, the other item that will be discussed in April when we have more information or better able to analyze it is the SNWA, um, changes in their fees.
And when you refer to inflation, how, what, what factor is responsible for that inflation?
For the capital improvement costs.
Well, you've referred to inflation several times.
It's many different things, so.
So like power, for instance?
Joe would be able to just explain the one on actual purchasing the power better than I because there's a lot of moving pieces in that one.
Mr. Stuvitz, would you like to address that?
Sure. So specifically for the power, there's, there was a 400% increase in gas costs over the summer and then about a 250% increase over the fall and other, other months. So there's a combination of factors that increased the cost for us to Silver State. One was Boulder Flats coming offline for us. And then the Townsite Solar coming on gave us, so we lost about three megawatts from Boulder Flats, gained a firm power purchase agreement with Townsite Solar at $39 a megawatt hour, which is, is good for us now. It's actually below the market rate. But that combined with the cost of power going up, the amount of rooftop solar coming online in the community and us not having the, the real demand to kind of match that, you know, that's, that, that has a lot to do with the, the increase.
Okay, as far as natural gas goes, do we have any idea of how much power is generated by natural gas that we use?
So I can't, I can't tell you like what percentage.
I know, it's a big, big pool out there that we just purchased power from.
So, so we've got, we've got, you know, several contracts. We've got Hoover A, Hoover B, SLIP, which is Glen Canyon and eight other hydroelectric facilities. And then the Townsite, uh, power purchase agreement. If we don't meet our power demands within those agreements, then we go out to the market. So our, our biggest monthly demand is. So our, our biggest monthly demand is going to be the summertime, where we're going to have about a fifty-two megawatt demand as a community. In, in the winter months, our lowest month is going to be about seven megawatts. So in the summer, we're actually going out into the marketplace to purchase power. So this is forecast from Silver State is, is what that, that cost is going to be.
Have they given an estimate of the kilowatt price?
They, they give the, the breakdown for the, the, for the year per month, yeah, and I can.
You mentioned, what I'm getting at is you mentioned the agreement with Townsite allows us to purchase that power at thirty-nine dollars.
Correct, yeah, and that's a firm fixed price at, at that for thirty years.
And what is Silver State estimating for the summer? Or do they break it down that way?
Yeah, just a second here. So they, they break it down in, in a unit cost per, per kilowatt hour. So, let's see if I can get to the, the month here. So at the peak demand in July, it's about seven point three cents a kilowatt hour. So they factor in all, all, all contracts that we have, and all of our sources to get, are included. So Townsite's included that as well as direct market power purchasing.
So I'm still not sure what the difference between the level we're paying for Townsite power and what we would pay at peak times from Silver State.
So the, it's whatever the market, whatever the market rate is. So it's, whatever's out there in, in the market. So whatever Silver State can get that power for is, is what we would pay. Right now, that market rate is well above that, that thirty-nine dollars per megawatt hour. It's, I, I mean, it has a lot to do with energy costs, but as well as rates, you know, financial rates. So it's, it's not a, a real prediction of what, what it could be, but it's above thirty-nine dollars a megawatt hour.
Like fifty or just forty or?
I would, I mean, at, at least forty.
All right.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
And a lot of the rest is just supplies and rising costs with supply, supply and demand.
Well, I understand, but when, you know, we start talking about figures in the four hundred percent range, and inflation last year, I think, was at seven and a half percent, there's a little difference there. So I, I guess we need to always be conscious of when we say inflation, what, what is that related to? The cost of gas, yeah, it's all over the place right now, so. But is that labor costs that, you know, we can project out? Or is it because Ukraine is under attack right now?
I understand.
Okay.
Can I keep going? And again, so water fund changes is really just additional costs. And I'm going to move on to wastewater. So the budget for twenty-three for wastewater is two point nine million in revenues and three point six million in expenses. And again, the large increase in expenses is due to one point seven million in capital improvement costs. And then wastewater, again, the largest revenue source is just their charge for services at seventy-eight percent. And they have six hundred and forty-seven thousand in voter-approved funding for their capital, to assist with capital projects in fiscal year twenty-three. And for fiscal year twenty-three, over sixty-five percent of the budget is capital for wastewater, which is one point seven in actual projects and six hundred and fifty thousand in depreciation. Repairs and maintenance is ten percent, and transfers out is nine percent, which is what supports the admin fund. And again, the change in wastewater is really just going into the capital projects to review their, re-review their costs at certain rates. The landfill, the revenues is about one point two million. And not included on this chart is also two hundred and fifty thousand of restricted revenues, which is the landfill closure fee, which is to support the landfill if it ever closes. And also the construction fee, which is on your bill, the seventy-five cents and seventy-five cents to, the, the construction fees to assist with future capital needs. And one point three million in expenses, which no capital improvement costs for fiscal year twenty-three are scheduled. All the revenues for the landfill are from charge for services. The expenses for the landfill, the majority of them, eighty-eight percent, is due to we contract out to manage our trash, trash service. And then also the seven percent to transfers out to support the admin fund. That comes to the end of all our utility funds. And now moving on to our airport enterprise fund. The budget for fiscal year twenty-three looks extremely high, but it's because of capital projects, not because of operating expenses. The revenues for twenty-three are budgeted at six point two million dollars. Of that four point eight is actually FAA grants to help assist with capital projects. And seven point two million dollars in expenses, which five point one million is capital improvement. So the revenues of the airport fund, eighty-eight percent next year are actually coming from intergovernmental sources. So four point eight, it would be FAA for capital improvement costs. And also the CARES money of six hundred and twenty-four thousand, it's the end of the CARES money that was allotted for the airport. And everything else looks really small, but it's about a million dollars in other items, such as hangar leases and fuel cells. So expenses for the airport for fiscal year twenty-three, again, eighty-five percent is CIP. So five point one million of this is all projects and one million dollars in depreciations. The salaries for the airport, when broken down like this, are just at like eight percent of their total expenses. And the large, the big changes in the airport from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three is we're going to use the remaining funding of the CARES grant of six hundred and twenty-four thousand. There is a large increase in revenues because of the large capital improvement projects. So the majority of that's coming from the FAA. The airport's unique in that almost the majority of their capital improvement projects are assisted with the FAA, with the airport only needing to match six point seven five percent. And our final enterprise fund is our cemetery fund. Part of these revenues, twenty percent, is actually perpetual care to assist the, the cemetery fund after, if it was no long, if it was fallen, was no longer collecting revenue to, to make sure that it's upkept. The increase in twenty-two and twenty-three in expenses is fifty, in twenty-two is a storage building, so it's a CIP project. And also in twenty-three, there's a fifty thousand dollars maintenance to repair the pavilion. And again, the majority, ninety-two percent, of the cemetery fund is just selling plots with an eight percent miscellaneous revenues coming in. And the expenses at the cemetery, forty-five percent is just repairs and maintenance. Salaries is twenty-eight percent, and even though there's no employees at the cemetery, it's the thirty-six thousand interfund transfer for, to Public Works to, for the upkeep of the cemetery, and supplies of eighteen percent. And to summarize, all the enterprise funds, all funds are, balances are positive, and they all have the, the required operational reserves. The only personnel change that's requested is the one in utility billing that would actually reduce the headcount by point two. And again, this will be brought up in, in item number three. The utilities director and public works director are currently reviewing all CIP projects and costs. And, well, they'll have an update at the next budget meeting, and this will also include possible use of ARPA funding for water and wastewater projects. And again, this brings us back to the same calendar for the enterprise funds as the governmental funds, where we'll have the citizen workshop on the sixteenth, and on the seventh, we'll come back to discuss CIP and operational budget. And I'd like to answer any questions you have on the enterprise ones.
A question that I think, you know, is obvious is the ARPA money within the utility fund. You know, there are significant amounts of that money that the guidelines say can only be used for water and wastewater projects. I, I don't see how that's fits into this budget.
It hasn't been approved yet, but it's been proposed to you for the projects for water and wastewater for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three to use the ARPA funding to, to pay for them.
And so we'll bring that up when we bring the CIP back. That's where all of those funds would be incorporated.
And again, the, the question I have about that, I mean, this could be up to ten million dollars. When we start talking about rate increases and this type of thing, rate funds, you know, that's a significant infusion of cash going into this fund. And how does that impact other expenses or revenues for it? Where, where, it, it has to be addressed. You can't put that much money into a fund and not address how that's going to impact that fund.
So we've done some preliminary estimates with, using the Raftellus model, plugging that in as, as revenues, and it, it does make a significant impact and essentially keeps the rates low for, for quite a while.
Okay. Councilmember Bridges?
I want to get back to the issue of inflation. Is there some sort of predictor of the increase in the cost of capital improvements? It, it's just a general, I mean, I hear people say, oh, it, costs are going to go up fifty percent, twenty-five percent. Is there an assumption being made of an increase in capital improvement costs? I mean, whether it's, you know, steel or plastic, I mean, whatever it is that's being purchased for these projects, just from what you've seen so far?
I haven't seen any way to accurately estimate that. The best we can do right now is, like for our electric project, we had one bid out about a year ago, and then we had one just bid out recently. So we're comparing those costs between a year ago to now. And we can even go back from previous projects and compare those. But I don't know how we can predict that moving forward. A lot of our guys over at the shops are saying just the materials that they buy are going up anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five percent.
Okay, I'd be curious to, to hear even anecdotal of, of a project that was done a year ago, even six months ago, and what that would be today put out to bid, because I think that's something we really have to take into consideration in all of our evaluations of this.
Yeah, it's like the feeder fifty-three, the San Felipe de Mendota project that you guys recently approved, where we asked for an additional one point three. Part of that was because of buying materials and stuff like that's incorporated with the project. But a lot of it was because those numbers haven't been updated every year. There should be a bump in the price every single year, and that's what Joe and I, what Angela just said. We're going to go back and look at all of these utility projects. We've got a pretty good understanding for the, the public works side, the general fund side of it. But the utility projects, we need to go back through every single one of those and reprioritize. And possibly, we're going to have to push some projects out, because with the ARPA funding, it's definitely going to help. But on the electric side, we're going to have to be juggling some projects around.
Yes, unfortunately, the, the ARPA funding could be sliced and diced to, you know, ten cents for you and twenty-five cents for you. And, you know, I mean, I think that's great that we have that funding. It's, it's a pretty amazing infusion of cash. But I know just from, you know, consumer goods in, in terms of what the increases are and what they're predicted to be. So I didn't know if there's, if there's any assumption right now, or if you're just really looking and doing a deep dive into what projects are going to be.
I've been asking in some of the, the groups that I'm involved with, more on general fund side, like RTC and stuff, and they don't have a real accurate number either. They've got a lot more staff to analyze that, and hopefully in the near future, they might have some numbers. But I don't know how that'll reflect back to the utility side, because they don't always cover that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Littrell and I have had many conversations about this, so making sure we do update those estimates for the projects is kind of our first priority. And then if there is a way to measure commodities, we'll try.
And I, you know, just to add to that, having seen these projects over several years now, and I, you know, this predates everybody, so I'm not pointing fingers at anybody who's currently here. When we look at, for instance, the sixty-nine KV line, I think the figure on that was originally somewhere around two point five million, and the project wound up being, I believe, nine point five million. So that's not an inflation problem, that was a estimate problem. You know, when we talk about those kinds of changes within these funds, that has a significant impact on how we should be planning for capital improvement projects, and if it is going to affect rates or not. But, you know, I, I'm just concerned about, well, we always chalk it up to inflation. The projects need to be looked at, because it doesn't appear that the original estimates took into account what needed to be done.
And currently in the rate study, we have them at ten percent. But that's just in the rate study, not in the budget, hasn't reflected yet what you guys have seen in the five-year.
All right. Any other questions or concerns, Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. One question I did have was regarding the, the change in this position. I know we're going to talk about that as the next item, but are we really talking about a, a, a part-time position? Or is it going to be another one of those full-time positions that we're calling part-time? Because when I hear they're going to be doing both utility billing and they're going to be reading meters. In my, you know, my personal experience outside of the, outside of, of the city work, be it, you know, when you're being pulled on both ends, you typically do find yourself working greater hours. So I'm just, I'm just kind of curious how we're coming to that determination.
Just with automation, just the need is in the office. And what's unique about utility billing is it has to be open from seven to six, and that includes lunchtime. So it's, it's, people have to leave. But, I mean, someone has to be there at the same time. So it's just getting more people in the office, and automations, they're, they're quicker at being able to drive by and get the reading rather than.
Yeah, let, let's hold this, since this is our next item, rather than getting into specifics on that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, that's fine. And then I did have a question for Mr. Littrell regarding, and perhaps this might have been a little bit better suited for the, the prior discussion, but since we are talking about CIPs that will be coming forward, where are we at with looking at, you know, making a change tonight, guys? And are, are, do we know what those costs might look like and how that might be applied into this?
Yeah, Joe and I have been working closely with Ms. Pipkin. She has submitted the grant. She's, they need a little bit additional information. The, whoever's given us the grant had questions on, they want a letter or an email, basically from RTC and from ourselves stating that, yes, this money is available. Yes, it's earmarked for fixing streetlights. So we're in the process of working on that. Ms. Pipkin was going to come back, I think, the first meeting in May to give an update. Hopefully, we got a better idea on the grant. It's an extremely competitive grant, but hopefully we have a better idea by then. So, and then also working on the streetlight ordinance goes along with that.
Gotcha, and then I guess, you know, my question with, as far as, you know, May being that meeting time, do you think it's something that we will be able to discuss as part of our budgets now? Or are we really not going to be able to? Do you think we would have an idea of where we need to do to consider that at this time? Or do you think we're not ready for that yet?
It kind of depends on if we get the grant or not. If we get the grant, I don't see any changes to our budget. There's a possibility. Joe's staff, we originally had said that would be our in-kind matches, the internal staff being, being able to switch out the lights. Our guys are so, I say our guys, his guys are so busy that we're not sure that's going to happen. So we might have to hire some contractors, but some of that might be able to pay for out of the grant. That would be the only real discussion. If we don't get the grant, then I, with the passage of a lighting ordinance, we would discontinue going that way with the available RTC funding.
And then as far as the grant goes, I mean, would it help for us to actually have dollars saying that we are moving towards this direction? Does that help in that consideration or not for this type of grant?
In discussion with Ms. Pipkin, well, she was asking if there's anything we could contribute. And I said, well, right now, there's a hundred thousand for pedestrian safety in RTC for next year, and a hundred thousand the next year. And she was blown away that we would be able to put two hundred thousand or close to that, because that money is shared between the streets department and electric department or division. But she was blown away, but that, by that being our match, so I don't see. But she was blown away by that being our match, so I don't see us needing additional funds, but additional funds would definitely help speed up the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will move on then to our next item regarding the utility billing worker, item number three.
Going to give Angelo a break. She's pretty much done. Item number three is for possible action. It's Resolution 7413 is a resolution for City Council Boulder City, establishing and approving a part-time classification for a utility billing worker. And normally, we wouldn't bring this now. We would wait and bring it at budget, like when we adopt the budget, but we have one meter reader who's retiring this month, Randy Smelzer. I hope I pronounce his name correctly. He is retiring from Boulder City after being here for 17 years. And the reason why we're asking for approval on this today is so that we can go ahead and change this position and not have to leave it vacant and go with one meter reader and have him have no time off, or not have, be able to take any time off between March and June till we get this position approved. So if we do it now, then we can go ahead and fill the position as we want it to be. So as Angela mentioned, as improvements and processes have been made over the years, the staffing needs for the utility billing staff have changed. And Brady Presswich is our utilities billing manager, Billing and Collections, and we met with him and talked about, you know, what the needs are of the department, and he felt that two full-time meter readers are probably no longer optimal for the current workload, but it's still, you kind of still need someone that can fill in when needed. So what is desired by the utility billing management is one full-time meter reader, which we already have, and one part-time utility billing worker. And the new classification of utility billing worker would mainly assist the full-time meter reader, but also assist in the utility billing office on an as-needed basis. So with that, I can answer any questions, or if you have really deep diving questions, I'll have Brady come up and expand on his answer.
Thank you. Questions regarding this? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just to kind of follow up, so the idea of this position is mostly to be in the office assisting with utility billing, or?
The what?
Meter reader.
So they would mostly be filling in as a meter reader, and then as needed as a in the utility billings office?
Yes. Okay. Yes, that would be it.
Okay. It just seems a little odd to me that we would be calling it, if the majority of the need is for meter reading, why is it then being called for utility billing?
It is a utility billing worker, which is different from somebody that would be a full-time meter reader. But also, what we're hoping is we can have someone that can do both areas when it's needed in the office, and also when the full-time meter reader has vacation or is ill, you know, or there's a need for assistance.
You know, obviously, the work, we need somebody to fill, you know, these positions. Personally, I don't like to see when you've got two very different types of work that someone's doing in one position. That's just a personal thing, but I understand that, you know, then to try and split it into two different other jobs probably isn't that economical either, but, you know, that's just where my overall comfort level is, is that seems to happen, you know, a lot as technology improves, then all of a sudden, another position turns into, well, now you have two different responsibilities that are sort of tangentially related perhaps, and then, you know, and if you continue down that line, I just, I don't like to see that. I'm not saying this work, this position isn't needed, but I just, you know, I want to be, I think we need to be careful when we start looking at positions like this.
Well, that's why we're changing it though, from a meter reader to utility billing worker, with the intent of the person that is hired for this position would be trained to help indoors as well as assist the main meter reader.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I just want to understand. Sometimes numbers don't make sense. If the person, if you're only hiring at 50% a part-time, or it is that 32 hours?
It's 32 hours.
Okay, so it's not half-time. It's, so the person would be, okay, that makes sense. I was just, I answered my question then.
Okay.
Because at first, I thought it would be a half-time.
Well, actually, I think it might be a combination of a 32-hour, you want, go ahead. Go ahead.
So there's a couple of changes. So the utility billing worker classification would be brand-new. This position's never existed before. They would just be part-time, so 20, less than 20 hours a week. But also, at the same time, we're promoting a office assistant inside utility billing to perceval, so that those who are awake only 19 hours would move to 32.
But the net is a negative.
But the net is a negative.
Yep. It's a point-to-reduction.
Net reduction?
Yeah.
Between two people's jobs versus...
So I apologize. It's part-time meter reader to, full-time meter reader to part-time meter reader, a part-time office employee to a 30, part-time to a 32-hour perceval. Phew, okay. It's getting late in the day.
Okay. That's it. I was trying to figure out where that point-two was not a point-five.
No, it's a point-to-reduction net.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? The salary range listed for this was 1836 to 2571. What does the current meter reader position pay?
That would be a Bryce question. 27? 27? Okay. My budget manager says 27.
All right. So this position would not be eligible for PERS or any other benefits?
No, not at the part-time level.
At 20 hours?
Mm-hmm.
But you're talking about increasing another position to where they get PERS, but no other benefits, or health insurance primarily?
Just PERS.
Just PERS, right? They don't get health insurance.
Yeah.
But it's based on the demands of that department at this time. I mean, that could change going forward.
Well, I believe once they're hired into a position like that, unless that position changes the description of it, they, regardless of how many hours they work, they might get paid overtime, but they would never be eligible for health benefits.
Not the part-time. Correct. You are correct.
Yeah. Also, I do understand, I mean, you know, the project's been done for over a year, I believe, but all the meters, all the electric meters in town were changed over to the Wi-Fi or RFID meters, where it now takes less time for those meters to be read. That's my recollection of that program was the meter reader no longer needs to go into the yard and actually look at the meter, they can read it from the street.
That's correct, and we also have the, some of the water meters through that WaterSmart grant that are also being replaced.
Being replaced, yes. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7413?
I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 7413.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote nay. Motion carries 3-1. Item number four, presentation regarding the master fee schedule.
Yes. Item number four is for possible action. It's to receive presentation and provide staff direction on a proposed comprehensive master fee schedule for fiscal year 23. The goal for this item is to have council adopt a single comprehensive consolidated master fee schedule at the May budget hearing. So then, if this was done, then every year during the budget cycle, the council will revisit the master fee schedule and can consider changes to the schedule before readoption with the budget. So before our contracts and real estate manager Brock Armentraut presents this item, let me take a few minutes to review how we arrived at this moment. So last fall, during one of our weekly senior staff meetings, the city manager Taylor Teder asked staff when fees were last evaluated, because we were talking about the upcoming budget process and, you know, training our new guy here and how things work, and he asked when fees were last evaluated. And I'll just leave it at, after some feedback from staff, the CM stated that it would be nice to have a list of fees, because everybody was talking about things, but they were just talking about them. Nobody could point to any particular document. So that comment has led to this item. So the CM asked senior staff to provide a listing of all of the fees they charge during their January 18th to 21st budget meetings with the budget team. So when we met with all the departments between January 18th and 21st, in addition to going through their budget request for fiscal year 23, a lot of them brought lists of fees that they could find related to their departments. So as information was gathered, Brock Armentraut was asked to create a master fee schedule. This task involved reformatting, reformatting information given to Brock in many different formats and mediums. There was some Word documents, some Excel documents, some PDFs, some were verbal. So in addition to creating one electronic document listing all the fees, Brock also researched the authorizing city council actions authorizing the fees. So many emails and meetings, and many emails, meetings, and phone calls have happened since that process started in January. There was 14 communications between Brock and departments in January, 18 communications in February, and four in March. And Brock is still receiving updates from departments that will be incorporated into the next version of what you're going to, we're going to talk about for your review. So one other item I want to mention, and Angela mentioned this earlier in this exercise, is this exercise has also brought to light some charges that the city pays, and we don't get reimbursed for that, like credit card service charges. And in this upcoming year, we're going to seek ways, and we already have started looking at ways that we can possibly do promotions using, you know, Lisa's help, Lisa will plan to encourage people to maybe pay directly with their bank account instead of with a credit card, things like that, looking at some of the big fees for permits paid with a credit card, maybe just establishing, recommending a service charge on the use of a credit card to pay a large fee. But we've just started looking at that. A lot of these things, a lot of these things have come to light in the last eight weeks, and it just brought that issue, and it's something I really believe that we need to look at and try to tone it down, because it is, these costs are increasing all the time. So the, before Brock steps up, I just want to talk about the staff report, and the staff report is a rather long staff report, but we did that so that we could have one place where all the changes would be shown, and that's an accompaniment to all the fees that we currently have documented. So all the fees on the big document aren't necessarily changing, but what we did was summarize the ones we know of at this time on the staff report, and we color-coded those. So if it was a light green color, that fee is new and not previously charged. If it's a light orange, it's requesting it to be adjusted upward. If it's blue, it's being adjusted downward. And some of this is rounding or just simplifying so that when a customer comes in, they're not paying, I don't know, $18.32 for something. You know, we rounded some things. There's red, light red-coded things, and those are recommended for deletion, and Brock will get into how we came up with that stuff. And then there's fees being reclassified to better reflect the processes, and that's light purple. So I know this is a heavy lift to absorb all this. We were trying to think of ways to make it so that the council could look at it and, you know, feel comfortable with some of these changes. And the ultimate goal would be, like I said, to bring it back each year at the budget time, and even if there's no changes, it would be brought back just to make sure we stay on top of the fees being charged. Once we do this, even if you didn't approve of changing any of the fees, we would still like to bring it back in May as one item with one approval, and then we could take that and create a booklet that would be for the citizens that they could pick up and look at and look up fees for various things. If they want to have an event in the city, if they want to close off a street for an event, if they want to rent a park. So, you know, we think this would be a very, very nice thing to have, to share with our customers. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brock so he can go into a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Diane. Again, I'm Brock Armentraut, your contracts, real estate manager. And for this project, I'm functioning as the finance department transparency expert. All the fancy publications we do for finance, they come through me, and this is one of those efforts where Diane asked if I would tackle this, and happily I would, as it's something I've been concerned about for at least 10 years, that we've had a hodgepodge of fees. So as Diane just described, this has been a complex process to gather a comprehensive list of all fees charged by the city for city services, facility use and rentals, research activities, and copies for information. As late as last Monday, a few was submitted to be included on the list, and I suspect a few more were still trickling for inclusion before we finalize the list. The one that trickled in last Monday was a fee that the police department collects for bicycle licenses. Surprisingly, they don't issue a lot of bicycle license fees these days, so that's why they didn't initially submit the fee with their original submittal. It was just, oh, we collect this fee. So it was, and we suspect there'll be several other fees like that that will trickle in before we meet again in April. Ultimately, because of the large number of individual fee schedules and enacting resolutions, it can be confusing to our residents and perhaps even city staff to locate the proper fee and be sure that they are paying the correct amount. Purpose of this project is to improve our fiscal transparency by consolidating all fees into one schedule. In an ideal world, all fees would have been evaluated annually and reaffirmed or adjusted as needed. Unfortunately, the various fees have been adopted either in response to new legislation, in response to a new need, or for a variety of other reasons. As a result, our current fees have adoption dates ranging from 1977 to 2018 as their last action date. The bicycle license fee was 1977, last time it was modified. And for reference, you may have noticed from the summary memo that the more commonly charged fees for photocopies, the use of our city parks and facilities, haven't been changed since 2007. As each fee was submitted for inclusion, I researched our city archives to determine when the fee was enacted and then last updated through the formal action by the city council. As you browse through the different fee schedules, you'll notice that resolution numbers appear on most tables. These are needed so that when we do adopt the final master comprehensive fee schedule, that we will know which resolutions we need to repeal and replace with this new resolution and new schedule. Also, as each fee was submitted, they were reviewed for consistency with our other fees. As a result of this review, several fees were identified as either being no longer needed, as they were duplicates, or that we had conflicts with two different fees being charged for the same thing. For example, you'll notice several fees are being recommended for deletion in the copy charges section for this reason, or being reclassified to be more inclusive for similar copy charges. Best example is the 11x17 copies for color copies. Several departments had different charges for the exact same thing, and we're now have an overall 11x17 color copy charge as one fee instead of being scattered throughout the different fee schedules. Each fee was also reviewed to make sure that changes in the battery revise statutes did not affect the fee. At least one fee is being deleted due to a conflict with NRS, that being the fee for copies of the agenda packet. Agenda packets by law are free, and previously, our packet required them to be, we were to charge for them. And another is being reduced so that we are consistent across all departments, that being for photocopies to single sheets. NRS limits copy prices for municipal courts to 50 cents per sheet. Our current master, or our current copy charge for all other departments is a dollar per sheet. We're recommending that we reduce the overall charge to 50 cents so that we're consistent across all operations and organizations of our city. And as fees were submitted, questions were asked if the fee was still needed or relevant. For example, under the copy fee section again, we are recommending deletion of fees for audiotapes and videotapes. The city no longer stores or records information on audio or videotape, and we do not have the ability to replicate in such mediums. These fees are being replaced with new categories for digital medium, such as flash drives or DVD drives or discs that we currently record and store. such as flash drives or DVD drives or discs that we currently record and store things. And during the analysis of fees, it was discovered that the existing fee table for the fire department inspections and plan review was a very lengthy table. This, this nice thick one. And that the proposed adjustment to the fee killed the tree. And while it was very accurate, we wanted to see if there was a better way to reflect that fee in our new fee schedule. And we carefully reviewed it to look for natural breaks in the fees to see if there was a way to consolidate it into a more condensed schedule that was accurate and still reflected the desire of the fire department to properly collect and charge these fees. And we were able to reduce it down to a three-line table that has a formula breaking it into three different categories based on the break points that were found in the fee schedule. We went through several tests using different evaluations of projects to see if the formula stayed true to the proposed fee schedule, and it did meet that test. The end result is it'll be easier to publish, and it will be easier to be understood by the layperson and by city staff as they work and do their daily work. As each department submitted their fees, they were asked to provide any recommendations for adjustments. And if there were new fee classifications that should be created, that a proposed dollar number be provided for the new fee. In the summary table, you will see the proposed adjustments as orange in color, and for any decreases, a blue in color, and any new fees would be green in color, as Diane mentioned. Those same fees are also replicated in the master table so that you can see the adjustments in context with all the other fees that are not being modified or recommended for change. And as a general rule, where practicable, if the fee was proposed to be adjusted, it was rounded up or down to the nearest whole dollar. There are several exceptions for those fees that are adjusted by either a contract for services based on C P I, which is our garbage collection fee, contract, or have been approved by a prior action of the city council to be increased annually by the C P I, and those would be the cemetery fees. If, if a fee was proposed to be adjusted as a reimbursement fee for staff salaries, the finance team took the information and plugged it into our financial planning tool for the overall budget to ensure accuracy for cost recovery, then rounded to the nearest whole dollar. You will see this in the special event fee schedule for public safety personnel. Note that this is assuming that the city is paying for overtime for a step-five employee for each classification of a public safety employee. The hourly rate does not include other costs incurred by the city to maintain that employee, such as the amortized cost of the police vehicle, communications equipment, or uniform allowance, and so on. While we could calculate those numbers, historically, the city has not included those costs for special event reimbursement of city staff time. You will note that it appears that just about every fee in the public works development services fee table is being adjusted, or that new ones are being created. To help clarify, other than the application fee-related lines at the top of the table, most of the other modifications are to make it more transparent to the applicant what the fee is being charged for. The best example is the excavation fee has been replaced by the individual service fees for water service, sewer service, electric service, and so on, so that as they receive their bill, they'll know exactly what it's for, not just a generic excavation permit. And you'll notice that in the table that the fee calculations for all those various specialty excavation permits are identical. And then there are other adjustments across the table to match the historical experience of the public works, history, the experience of the public work staff on typical length of work performed and the impacts on their staffing levels and availability. As with most public works permits, they do require our city staff to go out and inspect the work. And several permits, it's a multiple inspection process. And so the adjusted fees that are being recommended in the public works table are to accommodate for that staff time. This agenda item is in two parts. The first part is the summary of the known requested adjustments to the fee schedule and only lists the fees to be adjusted. For convenience, the date of the enacting resolution is provided above the fee category, along with a comparison of the purchasing power of a dollar from that year to the present. Most adjustments have notes to explain the reason for the action. The various department, city departments are present. Should you have specific questions about any of the recommended fee adjustments, should I not be able to answer them? The second part of the report is a master list of all fees with proposed adjustments in context. One note, as I mentioned earlier, we are still collecting fees and performing analysis. Since the publication of the staff report, we have identified that the municipal court fees are wholly controlled by state legislature, and the fees on our table are just a replication of the fees listed in the N R S. For that reason, in version two, when we bring this back in April, the municipal court fees will be provided as a convenience, but that the official fees may be changed from time to time as amended by state action, and that the published fees in N R S Chapter Four are the adopted fee. So future steps. We're looking for any direction you may have for staff regarding the proposed adjustments. Second version will be coming back at the next special budget meeting to ensure that we are on the right track. A final version will be adopted with the budget at the May budget hearing. The ultimate goal is to have a single consolidated master fee schedule that is readopted with each budget cycle. So even if the city council prefers not to adjust any fees upward or downward or deleted, what have you, we will still be bringing the consolidated schedule forward for adoption, but with the current fees, if that is what is, what is desired. And lastly, as design showed you, we are preparing a master fee schedule brochure to provide to the public and to the departments. It will be available online as well as copies in the building to make it easier for the public to understand what fees are being charged. And if they're doing their own research, they'll be able to take this home or look it up online and prepare their own analysis. So at that point, I'm ready for any questions. And we also have the various departments available here to also answer any questions about their specific requests.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. As far as comments go, I think this is absolutely necessary step for the city to take. I think it, as you said, it makes it more easily understood by members of the public on what are the costs that are entailed. So I think it is the right direction for us to go. One question I did have, I see here, special events, a lot of those fees are, seem to be new fees. Being that special events are kind of, you know, a big part of this town, was it, was it really that there were no charges being, being made for a lot of these activities, for these special events, or were they just not consistently applied, you know, or? I guess that's my question. How is it that there's so many new fees that just weren't even being applied to special events?
The simple answer is yes. It was both. In some instances, like cleanup charges would be applied for one category, but not for the other, for like, for a resident special event, they would be charged a cleanup fee, but the non-resident wouldn't, or vice versa. And in the event, in the special application, the special event application fee is a new fee. And that is mostly to have the applicant put some skin in the game. As Mr. Hall can tell you, we do receive quite a few applications, and then they never happen. But that doesn't mean the staff didn't do a lot of prep work and, and analysis and staff time to prepare for the event that eventually gets canceled. This is to more or less require the applicant to have some skin in the game. Some of the other fees, though, like the restroom fee or the street closure fee, things like that, that are shown being added, when you look at them in context with the second part of the staff report, you'll see that those fees exist for other classifications for special events. They just weren't consistently replicated across all special events, and that was never to be consistent in charging the same fee for all users of a park or a street, what have you.
With regards to the, the hundred-dollar fee now, is that something where, you know, if we're gonna be asking people to walk in with a hundred-dollar bill, you know, along with their application, are they going to then, as they turn that in, have somebody who makes sure that the application is done right and, and everything like that? Or is it just going to be turned in and then, you know, we'll see, we'll see where it goes from, from there?
I'll have Mr. Hall explain that since his staff is the one who processes those permits.
Thank you. Good question. We want to make sure that all special events are done right, especially when they come to Boulder City. And it's our job to make sure of that. So when a person comes in and puts the hundred-dollar down, he fills out a facility use form and a three-page fire department application. From that point, I write a letter to him listing all the requirements associated with conducting his special event in town. And then about two weeks or three weeks prior to his event, we, we schedule a meeting with city staff. We have police, fire, public works, landscape, parks and rec in a room. We go through, we turn it over to the coordinator. He goes over his setup, actual event cleanup, and then we go around the table and ask any questions that we may have regarding that. So it's been a very successful thing for a number of years, and we're gonna continue to do it that way.
Thank you.
And to further answer your question, if someone leaves something off on a form, we're not gonna make them pay another hundred dollars to resubmit, so we would work with them.
And I just wanted to, yeah.
That's correct.
And then, you know, I guess, and just as far as comments and directions go, I do want to make sure it seems like with, with most of these things that, you know, there is a benefit to being a resident here in town, whether, or, you know, as opposed to being an outside entity, or, you know, and then further benefit for being a nonprofit as well. So I do just want to make sure that that is consistent throughout. I think there should be a benefit for those of us here in Boulder City using these services. And, you know, where those areas can be, those, you know, those benefits can be made up by the outside entities paying a little bit more. I think that's definitely the right direction for us as well.
That is correct, and that, that has been our philosophy for a long time. You know, residents should get a certain benefit for living here and enjoying our seventeen parks. Non-resident coming in or a nonprofit organization, not Boulder City, coming in would pay a little bit more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Animal fees. I was, where I used to live, I think we paid eight dollars or ten dollars for a neutered animal, and it was fifteen or twenty per year for that, those which were not. And every year at the applicable time in my utility billing statement would be a reminder that my animal license was expired or expiring and that I should renew it. I've lived here ten years. I have never been reminded to pay my four dollars per dog. And then I go back and see that we have a twenty-two-thousand-dollar increase in veterinary expenses in our animal control department. So I would seriously like to see some action taken on, I know they don't go directly to that department, the fees, you know, it's, but in terms of the cost to the police department and their budget, that twenty-two-thousand dollars might be reduced significantly by just a dollar or so increase in animal, animal licensing fees and a reminder to people in the utility billing or some way to contact people and say, hey, your, your animal, you know, your, your dog license or whatever is, is up for renewal because there are probably a few people around town who don't have up-to-date animal, yeah, animal licenses. And oftentimes, it's not that they're negligent, it's just that they forget. So that was one of the things that really surprised me, that that hasn't changed and that I don't get reminded.
We've been looking into that, actually, because I went to register my pets. And, yeah, there needs to be a reminder. So, so we have been looking into that, looking at ways that Lisa can put that out, but I think the utility bill is a great idea, too.
Yeah, and also, four dollars is, is a really inexpensive, you know, if we're looking at, you know, dog park or whether, or we're, we're looking at an increased cost of, of taking care of the pets at our wonderful animal control building that I know that I've paid anywhere from eight to fifteen dollars for, for a license fee for a dog. And the other thing is, is in all these fees, are we taking into consideration that people are more and more going to likely be using their credit cards to pay for them? And where do those fees, the several, the three, four, or five percent that the city has to pay, where does that fit in?
As Diane mentioned before I stood up, that's something that the city's looking into right now, and that will come back at our April discussion. We've been busy compiling all the data to see just how much we pay and where the break points are. Is it for the ten-dollar payments, or is it for the five-thousand-dollar payments? So we can see where we would need to impose fees or just a flat fee. So, but that will come back at a future meeting.
But I'd really like to see us look into our animal, our animal licensing fees and, and a reminder system.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, I just wanted to say, great job, first off, for even thinking about tackling something that hasn't had a fee change since nineteen ninety-eight. And then going back and adjusting it and looking at what is applicable and what isn't applicable. Because I really think in, we're talking about inflation, we're talking about the changes in minimum wage, we're talking about the amount of even, we, we had to hire someone to clean up dog, you know, feces. Things happen in a city, and these fees can help to be able to offset those costs. So I think this is a, a great tool for us to have, and I really applaud you for looking at how to proportionately increase those. So thank you.
And in the case of the fees from nineteen ninety-eight, Michael May, as our community development director, did an excellent analysis of each of his recommended changes as to what we're collecting, what it actually costs us to process those applications, and with the compromised proposed fee, they're still being subsidized by staff. But it, it'll cause people, for example, applying for a variance to think twice for applying for something that probably isn't warranted. Whereas if it is warranted, it's well worth a five-hundred-dollar filing fee, as an example. So just here, I would just like to compliment him for doing a really good job in preparing his fee analysis and to simplify things. When you look at the fees for the subdivision maps and so on, it's just a flat fee as opposed to a strange calculation that we would have to do each time. And it just makes it simpler for both staff and for the applicant.
Thank you. Again, I, I credit Mr. Tetter for coming up with the idea to put these all in one place. I think that's, should have been obvious, but apparently for an outsider, it was obvious. You know, I, I have some concerns about some of these fees. It's been mentioned before about resident versus non-resident, and really just what the point of a fee is. Is it to pay for a service, or is it to accomplish something? Dog licenses, for instance, if an animal is licensed, we know that it has its rabies shot. We know that it's been spayed or neutered, which in Clark County, it's illegal to have an animal that is not spayed or neutered unless you have a, a special permit for that. So there are reasons for doing some of these licenses that are not to pay for a particular service. You know, I can recall back in the day of, of doing the bicycle license, because if you didn't have one on your bike, they took your bike. And when you're eight, you didn't want them to take your bike. But I also remember the process for it. There was this great big thing with the card file and all that, and somebody had to, well, there are things called computers now. So when somebody says, well, inflation's been such and such, well, you know what, if you have a computerized record, it's not somebody having to go to a card file and do all that kind of work and all that. So I, I'm not a big fan of, well, inflation's this or inflation's that. I think whenever we do things, we need to take into account what's actually being done. What, what is the process and also what the purpose of the fee is? You know, the hundred-dollar application fee that was mentioned earlier, you know, is that just keeping certain people out of, of the process? Can you do that on the permit side of it rather than the application side of it? It shouldn't take too long for someone to look at an application and say, this is either complete or it's incomplete. And I wouldn't want to see these application fees be barriers rather than having people say, you know what, I have a new event here. I really don't know how things work in Boulder City. Or is it just, we only want to deal with, you know, the people we've been dealing with, and so we're gonna put a high fee on just the application? I think, too, that there is a significant difference of having our taxpayers maintain I think, too, that there is a significant difference of having our taxpayers maintain facilities here, such as our parks, and then having somebody come in and say, I'm not from here, I want to use your facility, I don't want to pay you a lot for it, but I expect to make a very large profit off of your taxpayers doing all this work to provide this great environment for me to come in and make some money, and then I'll see you later. So I think that's another consideration that we need to have when we look at all of these fees. You know, I looked at some of the fees for using the softball fields or baseball fields. You know, I know exactly how much it cost when I was a kid to go play baseball. Nothing. You went down, you saw if anybody was using the field, if they were, maybe you'd ask if you could play, and if not, you waited for an hour or so, get to use the field. We're now getting fees up there where no kid's going to be able to afford that fee, and yet we have all these fields that sit empty all the time. So what is it that we're trying to accomplish with these fees? And I have some real questions about some of the ones that are there and what the purpose is. What are we trying to accomplish in this community? Are we trying to say to our residents, you know what, we have this great lease revenue that comes in, we have all of these great things here in Boulder City, but we're going to charge you more for that? Again, there's a lot of tradition here in Boulder City on what we use our public facilities for, and I'm afraid we get a little bit further away from it with some of these fees that are being charged. So I know we're not making a decision on this today, but I'll certainly be going through that, because as I was reviewing the packet and looking at some of the fees that are out there, it's a great way to make sure our facilities don't get used by our residents on some cases, and it's also a great way to tell people who intend to make a whole bunch of money, come on out here to Boulder City, because we've spent a great deal of money creating these facilities for you, and that's all to your good and not our good. So I think there are some real questions about some of these fees. Any other questions or comments? And currently, we are not looking for a decision at this time. Is that correct?
No, this is purely informational for you to look at, and then at the next.
Well, and if you did have any direction, such as I heard for the animal fees, to look into those, and if you had any other direction, we would look into that. So when we came back at the April meeting, we would have more answers for you.
Well, I do have one other thing then, as far as nonprofits, whether they're from here or not from here. You know, when we look at the types of fees that we're charging to a nonprofit, they're probably coming out here to do some type of service for a resident. I don't know that we should be charging them for that benefit they're providing to our residents, so I think that's something we need to look at.
You're thinking such as, for example, in the special event fees, we have, we call it a Boulder City nonprofit organization. You would prefer to see it just as a generic nonprofit organization.
Well, again, I think what it needs to look at, and yes, this is going to require probably a little bit of effort, are they coming out here to do an event, or are they coming out here to do a service? So is it a business license fee they're looking for, or is it an event fee that they're looking for? And I think there's an easy distinction there to make. What are they looking for? Business license or putting on an event?
So we can take a look at that? Definitely.
One thing that's on there as well are the utility fees. It seems that they, at least the water meter fees, are not correct. They were listed at the twenty-seven-dollar range. I thought those had been reduced.
That would be one of the areas that we need to adjust and bring back, and it's going to be broken out into two categories, the city portion and the S&amp;W A portion reflecting the recent change by the S&amp;W A just last week.
Okay, and then under the airport, there were several of the fees that were listed for, like the T hangar leases and the tie-downs, but not for the actual hangers that are out there.
Most of the hangers are out there, it's a, it's based on their contract.
But there's twenty-six of them that the city leases right now.
Right.
And those aren't listed.
Ms. Adoo is here, she was here. She is here. Could you answer that question?
Yeah, we can add that in the schedule.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any other direction needed, or is that sufficient?
I think that works. I've got notes on everything, and we'll incorporate those items and continue to refine it and get it to a place where it works for everyone.
And at least we'll know what we are supposed to be charging for things in the future, and not having to find a resolution passed in 1971 or something.
It is nice to have that booklet, and so everyone can be literally on the same page and know what to expect.
Yeah, I think it's a great way of handling it rather than leaving it up to not just the public, but our employees to try and figure out what applies and what doesn't. Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Armentraut. We will move to item five then, our final public comment period. Public comment during this period may be on any item. Individuals will have up to five minutes to speak. As always, please be civil and concise. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak in the final public comment period? All right, we will go to anyone wishing to call in. The phone number, seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. Anyone wishing to call in, the phone number, seven zero two, five eight nine, nine six Madam City Clerk, did we have any emails received?
No emails were received.
Thank you. All right, hearing no one then, we will close the final public comment period. Thanks to staff, it's thirty-five million dollars or so that we're trying to figure out here. Appreciate all the information, the hard work, and by June, we'll get it done. Thank you. We're adjourned.